Okay, good evening. Thank you, Don, and thank you for the gift.
You're welcome.
Good evening. At 6:00 PM on April 12th, and I'd like to call a town council meeting to order. If we could, please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those affected by the situation in Ukraine, some of whom have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. And I want to ask if anyone in the audience is recording, if you could please identify yourselves.
Doesn't appear to be the case, Mike. Nobody.
All right. Thanks, Don. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar Pursuit the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Our first order of business this evening under public comments. The first comment I'd like to make, we are coming into a vacation season here, and that could involve rental properties or airline travels. So if we could all keep in mind what our schedules might be. We're still waiting to hear what the governor's order will be on how we continue with our meetings. I'm pretty confident that the Zoom capability will still be a choice. But as long as we take an effect, like I said, our traveling plans, so that those can make those plans. Because as you know, we will be reorganizing in July, and we will need a full council to accomplish that goal. Second item I have under public comments is a letter that Jeannie received from Aaron, our director of the Council of Aging. And the letter reads as follows. "We are planning a dementia-friendly East Long Meadow kickoff reception tomorrow at 9:00 AM at the senior center, and would love to have the entire council join us and to invite President Kane to say a few words that morning in support of the initiative. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you and have a good weekend." And that comes from Aaron. I won't know if I'll be able to make that meeting because of my work schedule until probably 7:00 o'clock tonight. But if we could all keep that date in mind and time in mind for tomorrow. Maybe we can figure. I'm.
I thought it was.
I'm sorry. It April 14th, correct?
April 14th.
I'm getting ahead of myself here. So yeah, I'll hone in on my schedule. I have a little bit of time to do that. But wanted to pass the invite to everyone so that if they're able to attend, that would be great. Does anyone else have anything under public comments? Okay, we'll move along to council comments. And hearing and seeing none. Mary, do you have a manager's report for us this evening?
I have a couple leftover items that were included in last week's report that I never mentioned because the budget was obviously the primary topic of interest. But so I'll just briefly tell you what those are. There's a training for a park grant program on May 4th, which Steve Lonergan and Donna Prather are going to attend. And the reason I'm mentioning that is that now the town is eligible to apply for those funds because of our approved open space plan. And it may provide, it does provide up to $400,000, $400,000 a year if successful. And my hope is that we'll be successful and that some of those funds can be used for proposed heritage park development. Also, on the money front, the town, since last week, we've been notified that the amount of those statewide opioid settlements that the Attorney General brought against some pharmaceuticals companies have been settled. And Massachusetts is going to receive $500 million, which will be, of which the state, the Commonwealth, will retain $300 million, and the balance of $200 million is going to be allocated on some formula among the participating communities, of which East Long Meadow was one, because we did sign on to that class action lawsuit. Also, the Veterans District is now fully established. Our budget contributions are included in the draft budget that was given to you last week. And the district is reimbursing the town the approximately $3,400, I think that the DPW expended in order to create the office space for the Veteran Service Officer at the Council on Aging. The other issue that you should be aware of is that we had three cases pending against the town at the MCAD, Mass Commission Against Discrimination, two of which were settled in recent months. And the third one has now been dismissed by the MCAD for a lack of probable cause. Bailey Mitchell, our new Planning and Community Development Director, started last Monday. He's been very busy, as you might imagine. He resides down in the West Hartford area, so his day gets off to an early start, and he's got some nighttime meetings to accomplish. But he's jumped in with both feet. I've met with him several times. So he's very much, very energetic and working well with Nina Fazio, who's the administrative assistant. I know he met last week before the Planning Board meeting with Russ Denver and George Kingston just to go over some of the goals that they see for the Planning Board and how they want business to be run. So, so far, so good. We've also received a $37,000, $37,050 grant funded by the Mass Office of Business Development, which is funds that were applied for when Bethany Yao was here for development in the northern quadrant of town, focusing on identifying the needs of businesses in that area that had been impacted by COVID. We don't have the money yet, but when we do, I'll let you know. The Police Department has been awarded a grant in the amount of $2,500 for automated external defibrillator equipment. So Chief Williams and Chief Morissette will be administering that. Chief Morissette, obviously, as the emergency management coordinator. So that's other good news. We are in the process, as you know, of seeking a library director. And I have a small search committee that's convening tomorrow afternoon. Couple members of the library trustees. And we're going to have input from some of the library staff. They're not going to be on the search committee or the interview committee, but I want their input in terms of what they feel is important characteristics and so forth that they want us to consider for the next director. So that'll, that'll happen tomorrow afternoon. And I have four persons to reappoint, two of which require council approval. Bill Johnston has asked to be reappointed to the Board of Assessors, and he comes highly recommended by the board, the other board members, as well as Diane Bishop. I was surprised to understand that he's been on that board since 1989. But he's doing a great job, and he's obviously well-versed in the needs of the town. And so I would like to reappoint him since he's willing to continue serving. And also Cynthia McNaul has asked to be reappointed to the library board, and I would highly recommend her reappointment as well. She's key on the search committee that I just referenced for the new library director. But irrespective of that fact, Cindy's a very enthusiastic and engaged person. And so I'd like to see her reappointed, if you have no objection. The other two that are not listed in my report because their paperwork came in just today and yesterday. Mary Genuine Kaplan would like to continue her service on the Cultural Council. And I'm happy to suggest that, well, I'm going to appoint her. That's not an appointment that needs council approval, but I want you to be aware of it. And Andrea Driscoll, who was a recent appointee to the Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term, has asked to be reappointed, and I would like to do that. And lastly, George Kingston has asked to be an alternate member of the Historical Commission. And I think based on George's institutional knowledge of the community and his interest in all things historical, that I'd like to make that appointment as well. All of that is good news. The only negative news I have to report is that the CEP contract, which is our waste disposal, the vendor that we had for that service, has filed a bankruptcy petition that's due to be heard in court on the 14th and will be granted. So we have to enter what's known as a bridge contract, which is going to cost the town a little more money in terms of tipping fees from now until the end of this current fiscal year. So it's a short window, two, two and a half months. But the rate is going to go to $97 a ton from '93, I think is what it is now. So unfortunately, that, that's just an occurrence that we had no ability or we can't do anything about it. They're going to be bankrupt, and they're not going to be in business anymore. So then, starting in fiscal '23, we have four vendors who've indicated an interest in being our, will dispose of our waste, and Casella is among them, which is going to be our new vendor for trash pickup, starting July 1. And lastly, the Westcom Board of Directors recently approved a revised district agreement, which I did send to you. It's lengthy and it's dry, and it doesn't contain much change from the original agreement. But the reason for the revision was, or is, that the original district was formed in 2017, and it was originally contemplated that East Long Meadow and Hampden and a couple of other towns were going to participate. And then East Long Meadow initially signed on, and then we came out, and now we're back in. So council, bond council, in the transactional dealings of getting this bond financing in place for the renovation of the Schwinnigan Drive property, has suggested that we clean up that agreement, which we've done, which they did, actually. Their council did it for us. But the essential changes are, it forms essentially a brand-new agreement effective July 1 of '22 and going forward on five-year renewals. And changes verbiage, like, for example, we called it Westcom Board, and they've changed that to District in all the places where it appears in the, in the district agreement. But the substance of the agreement remains intact. So that's on your agenda for action a little bit later on. I'm happy to answer any questions about it if you want more specifics, but it's really no substantive change. And that's all I have. Mike, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mary? Okay, Mary, thank you for the update and the report. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 8, 2022, open session minutes.
I move to approve the March 8, 22, open session minutes.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. We're all called vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
I was absent, so I will abstain.
Okay. Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve March 8, 2022, executive session minutes.
I move to approve March 8, 2022, executive session minutes.
Second.
A motion in a second. Discussion. Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Abstain.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Sid?
Yes.
And we'll move to our last set of minutes. Motion to approve March 21, 2020, the special minutes of that meeting.
I move to approve the March 21, 2022, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, we'll start with Connor.
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, I don't believe we have anything under communications and correspondence and announcements this evening. But Jeannie, I believe you have some information regarding the annual town election update.
Yes, yep. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. You all have a document that I sent just briefly letting you know what's going on for the upcoming June election. March 15 was the last day to return nomination papers to the, for the town election. And as a result of that, there are five candidates for three-year term seats. Kathy Hill and Ralph Page are candidates for reelection. And we also have Anna Jones, Tara Leoni, and Sam Stoughton, candidates for the three-year term for Town Council. We do have an unexpired three-year term seat vacated by the passing of Tom O'Connor, and that will be on the ballot separately under the two-year term. Nobody had taken out and returned nomination papers for the two-year term. So that will, that will read on the ballot to fill a vacancy. For the school committee, you've got two seats for three-year terms. And Antonella Rochelle is a candidate for reelection, and also Carlos Rios is a candidate for the school committee. So we've got two people for two seats there. The, so that's the town election. That's June 7. There weren't enough candidates for preliminary elections. We don't have that in May this year, just the June election for that local annual election. The rest of the year, we've got the state primary, which is on Tuesday, September 6, and the state election on November 8. And we're told by the state that we will have early in-person voting, but we don't know what the dates are for that. I hope to have a library community room again, as we once did for early in-person voting for those two elections. But again, I don't know what the timing will be, how many days prior to the election the state will require us to do that. And I believe we'll have mail-in ballots for those elections, too. So that's the election update. And also, as I mentioned before at a prior meeting, there's a fifth precinct as a result of the federal census, the 2020 federal census. And there's also three sub precincts, 2A, 3A, 4A. And as a result of this re-presenting, about 20% of the residents have had their precincts changed. So postcards went to the homes of all those households to let them know what their new precinct was, to let them know the upcoming, upcoming election dates, and also to let them know that the polling location will be the same. It's just the precinct number that will be different. I don't know. Did anybody get a postcard? It's here.
I did.
Marilyn? Okay, yep. So hopefully, and I've had no questions asked for it. We are doing a second census mailing this year. I don't think that's been done in prior years. But for sort of a heavy election year, I'd like to get the most appropriate voting registration list we have. So a second census mailing will go out to people that have not responded to the first one, hopefully in the next week or two. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Next order of business is our public hearing this evening that's scheduled for 6:15. This is a public hearing for a required second reading for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding ground-mounted photovoltaic installation. The council members this evening are Marilyn Richards, myself, Michael Kane, Donnie Anderson, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Sid Starks, and Connor O'Shea. Jeannie, could you read the legal notice into the record, please?
Sure. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 8, 2022, at 6:15 PM via Zoom webinar for the purpose of amending and clarifying the Town of East Long Meadow bylaws, Section 7.5, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations, and Schedule of Uses, Section 3.041, ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, by adding language permitting ground-mounted photovoltaic installation and installations in residents' zoning districts. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jeanne R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeannie. I don't believe we have the so-called applicant in the audience, but I believe, Marilyn, are you going to read the bylaw into the record?
Mike, I'll actually read it if Marilyn's okay with that.
I'm really fine with that. Thank you.
Okay. We're a great team, and I appreciate it, Ralph.
Okay, so to start with, the Planning Board is the applicant. On December 22, 2021, they held their public hearing. And they have submitted the solar photovoltaic array amendment to the town's bylaws to the Town Council for review. They have voted 5-0 to recommend it. At our February meeting, we did our first reading of the solar bylaw, and it was submitted to the Planning Matters Subcommittee for Review. The Planning Matters Subcommittee did meet along with George Kingston from the Planning Board to review it all, and they have submitted some recommendations. I'm going to start with those. So it says, "The Planning Matters Subcommittee recommends the following changes to the solar bylaw submitted by the Planning Board. Number one, the bylaw should be configured into E-code format. Number two, subsection 450-10.2C be relocated to subsection D5, then re-letter and re-number as needed. Number three, update the location of the dimensional table to subsection 450, attachment to Table 3.2 of the code. Number four, all areas within the document should use the language solar photovoltaic installation. Five, change all references of site plan review authority to Planning Board and remove definition of site plan review authority. Six, change the wording within the document, interconnected customer-owned generator to interconnection of distributed generation." That was per the request of the Building Commissioner. Number seven, under definitions for small, medium, and large-scale solar photovoltaic installation, after the wording "surface area of solar panels," add the following wording. "Surface area is the total area covered by the footprint of the photovoltaic installation, of the solar photovoltaic installation." Number eight, "All plans and maps must be signed by a registered professional engineer and remove from the bylaw the registered land surveyor." Number nine, "Liability insurance shall be a minimum of $5 million." Ten, section 450-10.11A and B, change the word ancillary to accessory. Number 11, section 450-10.11E2, add the wording "or within." And number 12, subsection 450-10.15C and D, combine the two sections as they both relate to fencing. So with that, and with those recommendations, the following reading is the new proposed solar photovoltaic installation bylaw. Sit back and enjoy the reading. Subsection 450-10.1, Purpose. A, "The purpose of this bylaw is to promote the creation of new ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations." B, "The provision set forth in this article shall specifically apply to the location, removal, and modifications of all ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. In the event that conflicts may appear in other sections of the zoning bylaws for the Town of East Long Meadow, the criteria set forth in this Article 10 take precedence." Subsection 450-10.2, applicability. A, "This article applies to all ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations proposed to be constructed after the effective date of this article. This article also pertains to physical modifications that materially alter the type, configuration, or size of these installations or related equipment. Projects cannot be prohibited, but can be reasonably regulated by the Planning Board for the purpose of zoning conformity and the health and safety of the public." B, "Medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be subject to site plan review as specified in Article 10 of the zoning bylaws for the Town of East Long Meadow and in accordance with additional requirements specified herein." C, "Small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations must adhere to the following design and operation standards. One, utility notification. No grid intertie solar photovoltaic installation shall be installed until evidence has been given to the Planning Board that the owner has submitted notification to the utility company of the customer's intent to install an interconnection of distributed generation. Off-grid systems are exempt from this requirement. Two, compliance with laws, bylaws, and regulations. The construction and operation of all ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical, and communication requirements. Three, building permit and inspection. No solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed, installed, or modified as provided in this section without first obtaining a building permit from the Building Commissioner. Four, visual impacts and glare. At a minimum, vegetated buffers must be added to screen the length of the solar photovoltaic installation and 50% of the total height. The solar photovoltaic installation, including all accessories and pertinent structures, shall be designed to minimize visual impacts, including preserving natural vegetation to the maximum extent possible. Blending in equipment with surroundings and added vegetative buffers to provide an effective visual barrier from adjacent roads and screen abutting residential properties. Regardless of development status, sitting shall be such that the view of the solar photovoltaic installations from locations off-site shall be minimal. All solar photovoltaic installations shall be fenced." Five, accessory use. If installed in a residential district, all ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be considered an accessory structure to the principal use and must adhere to the setback specified in subsection 450, attachment to Table 3-2 of the code for the Town of East Long Meadow. All ground-mounted solar photovoltaic systems in residential districts shall be installed either in the side yard or rear yard to the extent practicable." Subsection 450-10.3, definitions. As of right sighting. As of right sighting, shall mean the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations may proceed without the need for a special permit or variance in the areas so designated by Table 3.1, the Schedule of Use Regulations. Ground-mounted, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A solar photovoltaic installation that is structurally mounted on the ground and is not mounted on a roof or other previously existing structure. On-site solar photovoltaic installation. A solar photovoltaic installation that is constructed at a location where other uses of the underlying property occur. Photovoltaic, PV. A method of generating electrical power by converting solar radiation into direct current electricity using semiconductors that exhibit the photovoltaic effect. Photovoltaic power generation employs solar panels composed of solar cells containing a photovoltaic material. Materials presently used for photovoltaics include monocrystalline silicon, polycrystalline silicon, amorphous silicon, cadmium, tellerude, and copper indium gallium selenite sulfide. Photovoltaic array, see ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Rated name capacity. The maximum rated output of electrical power production of the commercial solar photovoltaic installation in direct current DC. Solar energy. Radiant energy received from the sun that can be collected in the form of heat or light by solar energy system. Solar photovoltaic installation. A solar energy system that converts solar energy directly into electricity through an arrangement of solar photovoltaic panels. Roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A solar photovoltaic system that is structurally mounted to the roof of a structure. A solar photovoltaic system that is structurally mounted to the roof of a structure. Small scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies two thousand one hundred square feet or less of surface area of solar panels. Surface area is the total area covered by the footprint of the solar photovoltaic installation. Medium scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies more than two thousand one hundred but less than thirty two thousand square feet of surface area of solar panels. Surface area is the total area covered by the footprint of a solar photovoltaic installation. Large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation. A ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation that occupies thirty two thousand square feet or more of surface area of solar panels. Surface area is the total area covered by the footprint of the solar photovoltaic installation. Zoning enforcement authority, the Building Commissioner is charged with enforcing all zoning bylaws of East Long Meadow. Subsection four fifty dash ten point four, general requirements for solar photovoltaic installations. The following requirements relate to medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Subsection four fifty dash ten point five, compliance with laws, bylaws and regulations. The construction and operation of medium or large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be consistent with all applicable local, state and federal requirements. Including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical and communications requirements. All buildings and fixtures forming part of a solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed in accordance with the specific criteria set forth herein. Subsection four fifty dash ten point six, building permits and inspections. No medium or large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed, installed or modified as provided in this article without first obtaining a building permit after approval of the Planning Board. Subsection four fifty dash ten point seven fees. The application for a site plan review for a medium or large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation must be accompanied by the fee required for said site plan review. Subsection four fifty dash ten point eight, site plan review and approval. Medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall undergo site plan review and approval by the Planning Board as stating in the as stated in the zoning bylaws prior to construction, installation or modification as provided in this article. Subsection four fifty dash ten point nine, plans and maps. A, all plans and maps shall be prepared, stamped and signed by a registered professional engineer licensed to plat- practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. B, required documents pursuant to site plan review process as set forth in article nine of the zoning bylaws. The project proponent shall provide the following documents. One, a site plan shall be prepared by a registered professional engineer at a scale of one inch equals twenty feet or such scale as may be approved by the Planning Board on standard twenty four inches by thirty six inches sheets and continuation on eight and a half inches by eleven inches sheets necessary for narrative. The site plan shall include, A, name and address of project, locus, boundaries, date and scale of plan. B, name and address of the record owner, developer and seal of the engineer. C, names and addresses of all record owners within three hundred feet of the property lines. D, all existing lot lines, easements, rights of way, size in acres or square feet, abutting land uses and location and use of structures within three hundred feet of the site. E, property lines and physical features, including roads, characteristics of vegetation, mature trees, old growth, shrubs, open fields, et cetera. Wetlands, stream, streams, ledge for the project site. F, proposed changes to the landscape of the site. Grading, vegetation clearing and planting, driveways, snow storage, exterior lighting, screening vegetation or structures and stormwater management systems, including total acreage of disturbed area, total vegetation cleared. G, location and details of all security measures for the site. H, location of all existing and proposed roads, both public and private on the site. I, location of existing structures on the site. J, location of the ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation, type of mounting devices, access roads, lighting, ground equipment, fencing, electrical infrastructure and associated equipment. K, plans for accessory buildings or other structures and location and details of all planned security measures. L, all existing overhead utility lines if applicable. M, blueprints or drawings of the solar photovoltaic installation signed by a registered professional engineer licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, showing the proposed layout of the system and any potential shading from nearby structures. N, one or three line electrical diagrams detailing the solar photovoltaic installation associated components and electrical in connect interconnection methods with all national electrical code compliant disconnects and overcurrent devices. O, documentation of the major system components to be used, including the PV panels, mounting system and inverter. P, name, address and contact information for proposed system installer. Q, name, address, phone number and signature of the project proponent as well as all co proponents or property owners if any and R, name, contact information and signature of any agents representing the project proponent. S, uh, trees with a DBH of twenty inches or greater within project parcel or parcels shall be identified to determine tree loss along with inventorying of diseased or hazardous trees slated to be removed due to proposed development. Two, documentation establishing legal access and control of the project site. The project proponent shall submit documentation of actual or prospective ownership, access and control of the project site sufficient to allow for construction and operation of the proposed solar photovoltaic installation to the Planning Board and the Building Commissioner. Three, operation and maintenance plan. The project proponent shall submit a plan to the Planning Board for the operation and maintenance of the ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation, which shall include measures for maintaining safe access to the installation, stormwater controls as well as general procedures for operational maintenance of the installation. Four, zoning district designation for the parcel or parcels of land comprising the project site. Submission of a copy of a zoning map with the parcels or parcels identified as suitable for this purpose. Five, description of financial certainty that satisfies subsection four fifty dash ten point seventeen C. Six, proof of liability insurance and the amount of five million or greater coverage. Seven, pre-construction photos for the right of way in nearest abutters. These photos shall include tree coverage. Eight, visualization of post-construction solar photovoltaic installation development, including perspectives from the right of way or right of ways, uh, nearest abutting properties or residential structures and tree coverage. C, the Planning Board may hire, at the expense of the applicant, consultants to review the plan submitted if it determines independent expert review is appropriate for the interest of the neighborhood and or the community. In such event, the Planning Board shall select an expert to perform the review. The applicant shall pay the estimated cost of said expert to the town collector treasurer prior to any review being undertaken. No site plan shall be approved until the total cost of said review has been paid by the applicant. D, the Planning Board may waive the submittal of various required documents for cause established, established in the site plan review record and its written findings that the documents are not necessary for the Planning Board to perform the review set forth herein. Subsection four fifty dash ten point ten, utility notification. No grid intertie solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed until written evidence has been given to the Planning Board, the the utility company that operates the electrical grid, where the installation is to be located, has been informed of the solar photovoltaic installation owners or operators intent to install an interconnection of distributed generation. Off grid systems are exempt from this requirement. Subsection four fifty dash ten point one one. Area dimensional and density requirements. A, mediums, medium scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations within the commercial, business and residential districts shall be roof mounted, parking canopy or ground mounted as accessory to an allowable use only. B, large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations within the commercial, business and residential districts shall be roof mounted, parking canopy or ground mounted as accessory use to an allowable use only. C setbacks, medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, front, side and rear setbacks shall be as follows. One, front yard, the front yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located. Two, side yard, each side yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located unless said site is within or butts a residential district or residence. Where such a lot is within or butts a residential district or residence, the side yard shall not be less than fifty feet. See also subsection four fifty dash ten point twelve buffer strips. Three, rear yard, each rear yard shall have a depth that is consistent with the existing requirements of the district where it is located. Where such a lot is within or butts a residential district or residence, the rear yard shall not be less than fifty feet. See also subsection for fifty dash ten point twelve buffer strips. D, lot coverage, lot coverage shall be the same as allowed in the district in which it is to be located. E, height. The height must be measured. E, height, one, the height must be measured by the elevation of the landscape and no mounds will be allowed to change the elevation other than those allowed for the planting of trees in the buffer strip. Two, for all ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations within or abutting a residential district or a residence, the height will be limited to fifteen feet. Three, for all other ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, the height will be limited to twenty five feet. Subsection four fifty dash ten point twelve buffer strips. A, for medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations within or abutting a residential district or residence, the fifty foot setback for either side or rear yards shall consist of twenty five feet of a landscaped buffer. Said buffer is to, is to consist of plantings in minimum of six feet in height at planting and staggered so as to fill the twenty five foot buffer area and keep the rays from view year round. B, every abutting property shall be visually screened from the project area through one or a combination of the following. Location, distance, plantings, existing vegetation and fencing. Fencing not to exceed six feet in height. Subsection four fifty dash ten point thirteen, appurtenant structures. A, all appurtenant structures to medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be subject to the accessory regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures, lot area setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements for the district in which it is to be located. All such appurtenant structures, including but not limited to equipment shelters, storage facilities, transformers and substations shall be architecturally compatible with each other. Structures should be shaded from view by vegetation and or joined or clustered to avoid adverse visual impacts and meet the zoning setback requirements of the specific district in which said structure is to be located. Subsection four fifty dash ten point fourteen, design and performance standards. A, lighting, lighting of solar photovoltaic installations shall comply with the applicable laws. Lighting of other parts of the installation such as appurtenant structures shall be limited to the requirement to the required for safety and or operational purposes. Shall be limited to that required for safety and operational purposes and shall be shielded from abutting properties. Lighting of the solar photovoltaic installation shall be directed downward and shall incorporate full cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution and shall not shine on abutting properties. Any lighting on the site will require submittal of a lighting plan and written approval from the Planning Board with the recommendations from the fire and police departments. B signage, one, signs on all ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall identify the owner and provide a twenty four hour emergency contact phone number. Said signage shall not exceed six square feet and shall be visible at all times. Two, solar photovoltaic installations shall not be used for displaying any advertising except for identification of the operator or responsible person of the solar photovoltaic installation. C, utility connections, all utility connections from the solar photovoltaic installation shall be placed underground. However, depending on the appropriate soil conditions, shape and topography of the site and any requirements of the utility provider, the applicant may seek relief from this requirement from the Planning Board. Electrical transformers for utility interconnections may be above ground if required by the utility provider. However, placement on the site must be approved as part of its existing standard procedures. D, roads, all access roads shall be constructed to minimize grading, removal of stone walls or street trees and minimize impacts to environmental or historic resources. E, hazardous materials. Hazardous materials stored, used or generated onsite shall not exceed the amount for a very small quantity generator of hazardous waste as defined by the DEP Pursuit and Mass DEP Regulations three ten CMR thirty point zero 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 or any amendment or replacement and shall meet all requirements of the DEP, including storage of hazardous materials in a building with an impervious floor that is not adjacent to any floor drains to prevent discharge to the outdoor environment. If hazardous materials are utilized within the solar electric equipment, then impervious containment areas capable of controlling any release to the environment and to prevent potential contamination of groundwater are required. A full inspection report establishing compliance prepared by the fire department will be required before the site plan can be approved. F, noise. Sound or noise levels may not exceed fifty DBA at the boundary of the property. G, pollinator friendly certification. No large scale solar photovoltaic installation shall be constructed until proof has been given to the Planning Board that the project proponent has obtained pollinator friendly certification for their solar photovoltaic installation through the UMass Clean Energy Extension Pollinator Certification Program at a minimum of the silver certification level or other equivalent certification as determined by the Planning Board. This certification must be maintained throughout the life of the installation. H, daytime visual distraction. All ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations must be positioned to minimize glare on any residence or public way and must not create a visual obstruction on a public roadway such as blocking the sightline of intersections or creating blind curves. The applicant should submit a ratings and technical specifications for the solar panel. The applicant should submit a ratings and technical specifications for the solar panels to ensure minimal reflectivity. Subsection four fifty dash ten point fifteen safety and environmental standards. A emergency services. The ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation owner or operator shall provide a copy of the project summary, electrical schematic, and site plan to the East Long Meadow Fire Chief. Upon request from the East Long Meadow Fire Chief, the owner or operator shall cooperate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan and provide a copy to the fire department. All means of shutting down the solar photovoltaic installation shall be clearly marked. The owner or operator shall identify a responsible person for public inquiries throughout the life of the installation. B land clearing. Soil erosion and habitat impacts. Clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation or otherwise prescribed by applicable laws, regulations, and bylaws, including any requirements of the Conservation Commission. C fencing. A chain link fence, no more than one quarter solid, shall be installed around the installation at the setback line with a gate that is locked at all times. Which lock is to be approved by the fire department? The fire and police department shall have twenty four hour access to the site. There shall be a gap along the bottom of the fence that complies with the UMass Clean Energy Extension Pollinator Friendly Certification Program standards in order to allow for wildlife crossing under the fence. Subsection four fifty dash ten point sixteen monitoring and maintenance. A solar photovoltaic installation conditions. The ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation owner or operator shall maintain the facility in good condition. Maintenance shall include but not be limited to: painting, structural repairs, and integrity of security measures. Site access shall be maintained as required by the zoning bylaw and applicable laws. The owner or operator shall be responsible for the cost of maintaining the solar photovoltaic installation, any access road, and ground maintenance. B modifications. No building permit for modifications to a medium or large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation shall be issued after the issuance of the initial building permit unless amended site plan for said modification has been approved by the planning board. C annual reporting. The owner or operator of the installation shall submit an annual report which certifies compliance with the requirements of this bylaw and the approved site plan, including control of the vegetation, noise standards, and adequacy of road access. The annual report shall also provide information on the maintenance completed during the year and the amount of electricity generated by the facility. The report shall be submitted to the planning board, fire chief, emergency management director, building commissioner, and conservation commission if a wetlands permit was issued. No later than forty five days after the end of the calendar year. Failure to provide such an annual report will result in a fine of one hundred dollars per day until said report is received. Subsection four fifty dash ten point seventeen abandonment and decommissioning. A removal requirements. Any ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation which has reached the end of its useful life and has been abandoned consistent with subsection B of this section shall be removed. The owner or operator shall physically remove the installation no more than ninety days after the date of discontinued operations or determination of the building commissioner that the installation is not being actively used for meaningful solar photovoltaic generation. The owner or operator shall notify the building commissioner with a copy to the planning board by certified mail of the proposed date of discontinued operations and plans for removal. Decommissioning shall consist of: One, physical removal of all ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, structures, equipment, security barriers, and transmission lines from the site. Two, disposal of all solid and hazardous waste in accordance with local, state, and federal waste disposal regulations. Three, stabilization or revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion. The building commissioner may allow the owner or operator to leave landscaping or designated below grade foundations in order to minimize erosion and disruption to the vegetation. B abandonment. Absent notice of a proposed date of decommissioning or written notice of extenuating circumstances. The solar photovoltaic installation shall be considered abandoned when it fails to operate for more than six months without the written consent of the planning board. If the owner or operator of the ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation fails to remove the installation in accordance with the requirements of this section within ninety days of abandonment or the proposed date of decommissioning. The town may seek an order from an appropriate court to enter the property and physically remove the installation at a cost to the owner or operator of the installation and use the bond money being held and or place a municipal charges lien on the property for the costs of removal, site restoration, and all other related costs, including attorney's fees if not covered by the cash bond, being held by the town. C financial surety. Prior to any construction, petitioners of large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall provide surety in a cash bond to cover the cost of removal in the event the town must remove the installation and remediate the landscape in an amount determined to be reasonable by the planning board, but in no event to exceed more than one hundred and twenty five percent of the cost of removal and compliance with the additional requirements set forth herein as agreed upon by the project proponent and the planning board or its agents. Such surety will not be required for municipality or state owned facilities. The project proponent shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the cost associated with removal prepared by a qualified engineer, which estimate must be reviewed and proved by the planning board or its agent. The amount shall include a mechanism for calculating increased removal costs due to inflation. And then we have table three one. Under section three point zero four one, ground mounted photovoltaic arrays. Under the comments, it says C section seven point five. Under residential double A is a Y, a yes. Under A is a yes. Under B, yes. Under C, yes. Under ER is no. Under commercial is yes. Under business is yes. Under industrial is yes. Industrial garden park is yes. Golf recreation is no. PUR is no. And PAR is no. And my reading is completed.
All right. You did a great job with it. I'm sure you read the entire document from memory, so I congratulate you for that. At this point in time, the public will now have time to offer input, so I would ask Don if there's anyone in the audience that wants to offer that input at this time.
I don't see any hands raised. If anybody wants to comment, raise a hand. Otherwise. Appears not, Mike.
Okay, thanks, Don. So we will close the public input portion of the meeting and the council will actually have time to discuss the matter amongst themselves if there's anything anyone else wants to add. And I'm not seeing anything there. So at this point in time, we will close the public meeting by a roll call vote and and vote to adopt. So I'm making a motion to close the public hearing. I'm a yes, Don Anderson.
Yes.
Kathy?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. Ralph?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's nothing else affiliated. Okay.
Mike, point of order. I think you made a motion to close the public hearing. I didn't hear a second, so if there wasn't one, I second the motion and then we did the roll call vote just for clarification.
Okay, thank you for that, and we are within the time restraints for our second public hearing this evening.
Go ahead. Make the motion on that first public hearing.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I am saturated here and I was looking for that. And and yes, Connor, motion to amend and clarify, please.
Sure. I move to amend and clarify the town of East Long Meadow bylaws, section seven point five, ground mounted photovoltaic installations, and schedule of uses, section three point zero four one, ground mounted photovoltaic arrays as presented.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion regarding the motion? I'm hearing and seeing none. We'll continue with our roll call vote, starting with Don.
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our second public hearing this evening is a public hearing for required second reading again for the adoption of the code for East Long Meadow. Council members, again, Don Anderson, myself, Michael Kane, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Sid Starks, Connor O'Shea, and Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, could you please read that legal notice into the record?
Sure. East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty two, at six fifteen PM via Zoom webinar to address the codification of the general and zoning bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow. Information and documents relating to this codification is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website for the council, Jean R. Quagletti, town clerk of the council.
Just a quick point, excuse me, Mr. President. Jeannie, did you mean to say six fifteen or did you mean to say six twenty five?
So this is a continued public hearing, so the legal notice I'm reading is for the original public hearing that happened back on March eight.
All right, I'm just reading the, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don, and thanks, Jeannie. Ralph, I'm assuming you're going to represent the applicant, and if you're warmed up and ready to go, you can present the reasons and rationale.
Yes, my vocal cords are all warmed up. So as you know, as the counselors know, we entered into this three, four years ago to do the codification of our bylaws and our zoning bylaws. We also at the time tackled the traffic rules and regulations, which will be coming up later in the meeting, which isn't a bylaw, and that's just a straight out vote on those. But with this, so we're going to jump right into it. The town of East Long Meadow proposed code adoption bylaw. Article three, adoption of code, subsection one dash ten, code adopted, continuation of existing provisions. Codification of the general and zoning bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow as recodified and consisting of chapters one through five hundred, together with appendix, are hereby approved, adopted, and enacted as the code of the town of East Long Meadow. Hereafter referred to as the code, the provisions of the code, insofar as they are substantively the same as those of the bylaws, in force immediately prior to the enactment of the code by this bylaw, are intended as a continuation of such bylaws and not as a as new enactments. This bylaw and the code adopted hereby shall supersede and replace the nineteen eighty two bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow as amended and supplemented. This act is being undertaken in accordance with the codification process outlined in article two dash six of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. It is the determination of the town council that the changes to the that the changes to and modification of the existing town bylaws implemented hereby are appropriate for treatment as part of that codification process. Subsection one dash eleven, code on file, additions and amendments. A, a copy of the code has been filed in the office of the town clerk and shall remain there for use and examination by the public until final action is taken on this bylaw. Following adoption of this bylaw, such copy shall be certified by the clerk of the town of East Long Meadow by impressing thereon the seal of the town as provided by law, and such certified copy shall remain on file in the office of the town clerk. Be made available to persons desiring to examine the same during all times while said code is in effect. B additions or amendments to the code. When adopted in such form as to indicate the intent of the town council to make them a part thereof, shall be deemed to be incorporated into such code so that reference to the code so that reference to code of the town of East Long Meadow shall be understood and intended to include such additions and amendments. Nothing contained in this bylaw shall affect the status of any bylaw contained in the code, and such bylaws shall and such bylaws may be amended, deleted, or changed from time to time as the town council deems desirable. Subsection one dash twelve, notice publication. In the event that notice of enactment of this bylaw is required due to amendments adopted by way of this bylaw to zoning or land use provisions or is otherwise required by law, the clerk of the town of East Long Meadow shall cause notice of the enactment of this bylaw to be given in the manner required by law. The notice of the enactment of this bylaw, coupled with the availability of a copy of the code for inspection by the public, shall be deemed, held, and considered to be due in legal publication of all provisions of the code for all purposes. Subsection one dash thirteen repeal. A repeal of inconsistent enactments. All bylaws of a general and permanent nature or parts of such bylaws inconsistent with the provisions contained in the code adopted by this bylaw are hereby repealed, provided, however, that such repeal shall only be to the extent of such inconsistency. And any valid legislation of the town of East Long Meadow which is not in conflict with the provisions of the code shall be deemed to remain in full force and effect. B repeal of specific enactments. The town of East Long Meadow, the town council of the town of East Long Meadow has determined that the following portions of the nineteen eighty two bylaws are no longer in effect and hereby specifically repeals the following sections. One, section five point zero three zero, inspector of weights and measures. Two, section five point zero five zero, building inspector. Three, section eight point one zero zero, limitation on the use, sale, keeping, and storage of fuel burning portable space heaters. Four, section ten point zero one one. Conservation Commission consultant fees definition. Five, section ten point zero five zero, industrial development committee. Six, section ten point zero six zero, industrial development financing authority. Subsection one dash fourteen, enactment saved from repeal, matters not affected. The repeal of bylaws provided for in subsection one dash thirteen of this bylaw shall not affect the following classes of bylaws, rights, and obligations which are hereby expressly saved from repeal. A, any right or liability established, accrued, or incurred under any legislative provision of the town of East Long Meadow prior to the effective date of this bylaw or any action or procedure. or any action or proceeding brought for the enforcement of such right or liability. B, any offense or act committed or done before the effective date of this bylaw in violation of any legislative provision of the town of East Long Meadow or any penalty, punishment, or forfeiture which may result therefrom. C, any prosecution, indictment, action, suit, or other proceeding pending or any judgment rendered prior to the effective date of this bylaw brought pursuant to any legislative provision of the town of East Long Meadow. D, any agreement entered into or any franchise license, right, easement, or privilege heretofore granted or conferred by the town of East Long Meadow. E, any enactment of the town of East Long Meadow providing for the laying out, opening, altering, widening, relocating, straightening, establish grade, changing name, improvement, acceptance, or vacation of any vacation of any right of way, easement, street, road, highway, park, or other public place within the town of East Long Meadow or any portion thereof. F, any enactment of the town of East Long Meadow appropriating money or transferring funds, promising or guaranteeing the payment of money or authorizing the issuance and delivery of any bond of the town of East Long Meadow or other instrument or evidence of the town's indebtedness. G, enactments authorizing the purchase, sale, lease, or transfer of property or any lawful contract, agreement, or obligation. H, the levy or imposition of special assessments or charges. I, the annexation or dedication of property. J, any bylaw relating to salaries and compensation. K, any bylaw amending the zoning map. L, any bylaw relating to or establishing a pension plan or pension fund for town employees. M, any bylaw or portion of a bylaw establishing a specific fee amount for any license, permit, or service obtained from the town. N, any bylaw adopted subsequent to January two thousand and twenty-one. Subsection one dash fifteen, changes in previously adopted legislation. A, in compiling and preparing the bylaws for codification and publication as the code of the town of East Long Meadow, certain grammatical changes and other minor non-substantive changes were made in one or more of said bylaws. It is the intention of the town council that all such changes be adopted as part of the code as if the bylaws had been previously formally amended to read as such. B, in addition, the amendments and or additions as set forth in Schedule A attached hereto and made a part hereof are made herewith to become effective upon the effective date of this bylaw. Chapter and section number references are to the bylaws as they have been renumbered and appear in the code. C, all bylaws included in the code have been made gender neutral. This style will be maintained throughout the life of the code as the code is supplemented with new and or updated bylaws in the future. Subsection one dash sixteen, titles and headings, editors' notes. A, chapter and article titles, headings and titles of sections and other divisions of the code are inserted in the code and may be inserted in supplements to the code for the convenience of persons using the code and are not part of the legislation. B, editors' notes indicating sources of sections giving other information or referring to the statutes or to other parts of the code are inserted in the code and may be inserted in supplements to the code for the convenience of persons using the code and are not part of the legislation. Subsection one dash seventeen, when effective. This bylaw shall take effect when duly adopted by the town council pursuant to the requirements of the town charter and published or posted pursuant to the requirements of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, subsection thirty-two A, as amended. Done. You're muted, Mike.
Thank you, Ralph, and I would ask if there's anyone in the public, um, that wants to offer any comments under the public portion of the public hearing.
I don't see any hands raised, Mike.
Thank you once again. So we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, uh, council comments.
We need a motion to close a public hearing.
I'm not closing yet. Uh, just want to make sure that no one has any council comments. The, I was only closing the public portion of the meeting for input, Ralph.
So Mike, I would just like to give a huge shout out to Jeannie. Um, she's been with this from the beginning, uh, working tirelessly on it, uh, back and forth, multiple amendments here and there, up and down. I cannot tell you how many meetings she's attended with us, and it is greatly appreciated, all the effort. And I think this is something that the town is really going to enjoy once we get it up and working on our website.
Uh, couldn't agree more. And from all of us, Jeannie.
We had a great committee. It was enjoyable to work on. Um, so thank you all for that. The, uh, the next and final step, and I'm so happy to say final step, is I can send this, um, if this is approved tonight, I can send this to the vendor general code. They will insert the adoption of the code bylaw as read by Ralph into the code. And they may even include the approved solar bylaws tonight. They've been very good and just inserting as we go along, any bylaw that's been approved, even these, these last stages. So I will, um, do that tomorrow and probably take two or three weeks for them to get that all together, to have it published online, and then also to, uh, prepare a limited amount of hard copy versions for the town. So.
Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, uh, as I stated earlier, the public portion of the meeting is closed. I'll close the uh, council portion. So I'm making a motion to close the public hearing and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you for the seconds. And we'll roll call vote to close the public hearing. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, public hearing is closed and I'll entertain a motion, um, for the, uh, codification of the general and zoning bylaws.
Great, I will, uh, I will, I will move that the codification of the general and zoning bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow as recodified and consisting of chapters one through five hundred, together with an appendix, are hereby approved, adopted, and enacted as the code of the town of East Long Meadow, here and after referred to as the code.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'm hearing and seeing none. Um, Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you all.
Good job.
Great job, Ralph. Great job, Jeannie. And, uh, a lot of work went into these meetings and I'm glad they're behind us. Um, under licensing matters, I will ask for a motion um, to approve a one-day entertainment license for the brew practitioners.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, I move to approve a one-day entertainment license for brew practitioners, forty-five Baldwin Street, for a private charity benefit for Timmy Strong on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, from five to ten P M.
I will second that.
A motion in this, uh, second. Any discussion regarding this topic? Don?
I, I, I have to make a comment. Uh, that's one of the most creative applications, that last line.
Funny.
Yeah, it about, uh, was it, I'm doing this from memory, approp- uh, appropriate for older, mature people. There's no, that could be any rock and roll, loud rock and roll, and the music could be appropriate for older, mature people. And I was like, never seen that.
Quiet for old, mature people.
Thank you.
Not my words.
Um, okay, we, we, we have a, a motion and a second on the floor, and I, I believe that's the end of the discussion. So we'll, we'll all call vote on that. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, next order of business, uh, falls under, uh, financial. So I believe Steve's going to make his presentation this evening. If he's ready to go.
I'm ready to go. Uh, it's a quick, uh, agenda on the financial matters. Uh, as you know, we've been working on the budget as a pri- the primary function of the finance division over the last few weeks. And it, um, there, we're still fine tuning and working hard as far as I go, as well as the day-to-day stuff. For tonight, we have three items. Uh, the first one is the acceptance of an AED for the recreation department. Rob Hanson has, uh, offered to donate this equipment valued at sixteen hundred dollars. And talking to Donna, she said that she thinks it's a valuable piece. And I agree with her, a valuable piece of safety equipment for the department to use at various locations. So that, that don't have them currently in place. That's, that's item number one. Uh, item number two is bills of a prior year. Uh, as you may or may not know, I didn't know until this came up. The town is responsible for the care and maintenance of the veterans' graves and through oversight, the only way I can think of it. I'm not sure why, uh, the last couple of years, they've fallen through the cracks and we need to pay them. Uh, we paid for twenty-two, but I believe it's nineteen, uh, there's one from nineteen twenty and twenty-one, uh, we need to pay. And so we'd like to pay for those. And finally, the historical commission. Uh, if you remember earlier this year, we approved from the historical trust a sixteen hundred dollar bill to repair the shed roof. And then later on, we did the seven hundred and nine dollars for the furnace. And it was determined that it was a town-owned building and the town should pay for it. So the historical commission would like to get reimbursed to their trust, the sixteen hundred dollars they took out. And we would have to take it out of free cash to pay for the shed roof. And that, that's what I got for you today. After Counselor Page is reading, I think we, I, I tried to keep it as brief as possible.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, before I ask for a motion, does anybody have any questions for Steve regarding, uh, either one of the motions? Ralph?
So, under the historical commission and the shed roof, um, do we have a plan going forwards as far as town-owned buildings? Um, as far as if there's an issue, let's say with well, uh, building again, who they need to contact. Um, I'm assuming something like this would normally have probably been taken care of or fixed by the DPW. And instead of these different facilities going out and hiring subcontractors, um, is there a plan in place to say, hey, it's got to go through such and such a department or, um, just so that it doesn't keep happening and just hiring outside contractors all the time without prior knowledge?
I, I've been meeting periodically with the, um, with Ken from the historical commission, and we're developing that now. We will have a final one for your review fairly shortly to avoid this hassle for the same thing. A lot of this came up new. And, uh, so we were developing to make sure it can cover a broad range without being too limited to just historical commission, for example, but across the board. And it'll have included a policy and a procedure of you go step one, step two, so on, till, um, we get to the point of payment.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Ralph. Um, that being said, uh, B one, B, motion to approve prior year's bills for payments for the veterans, et cetera.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, I move to approve prior year's bills for payments for veterans cemetery costs in the amount of two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars from fiscal year twenty-two Veterans Day account.
I second the motion.
Uh, thank you for the motion in the second. Any discussion? And we'll start right up at the top with Don.
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, motion under B one C, and that motion is to approve the appropriation of the sixteen hundred from free cash.
Um, I motion to approve the appropriation of sixteen hundred from free cash, uh, to the historical commission for the historical commission headquarters roof.
And I second that motion.
Okay, thank you for the motion. In the second discussion, I'm hearing and seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you for that. Okay. Under old business.
Mike.
Marilyn?
I'm sorry, Mike, we missed the first motion to accept the defibrillator.
Okay, my screen just went black here. That's probably why. Let me bring this back up.
I've got it written in front of me, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion. Um, I move to approve a donation from Bob Hanson of an AED automated external defibrillator valued at one thousand six hundred dollars to the recreation department, per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
Second.
Um, thank you, Marilyn, and thank you, Connor. Any discussion regarding the AED? And hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And Marilyn, thanks for picking up on that. I've got three screens running and it, it went black right at the wrong time. Uh, that being said, we're moving to old business. And, um, that's regarding the town manager search update. I was reluctant to say much at our last special council meeting because there were many, uh, factors that weren't finalized at that point in time. But per the direction of the council, myself and Mary, um, worked with the agent from the Collins Center and, uh, put together an advertisement that we thought would be acceptable by the council. It did go back and forth a couple of times and it was tweaked. And, um, at the discretion of the council, that, uh, that advertisement has been published in various different locations. And we will be, um, accepting resumes, I believe, through the twenty-fourth of this month. Uh, part two is, um, working, we worked on the screening committee. And, um, that just came to fruition as of, um, I would say probably yesterday, and they're scheduled, I believe, to have their first meeting. Um, it, it's, it's probably, uh, tomorrow or Thursday. That date has been uh, pushed back and forth a few times. But, um, the meeting at this point in time, um, the last correspondence I had, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe will be, um, held in person for at least the first meeting. Um, that's, that's all I have at this point in time. If anyone has any questions for myself and Mary on any other particulars, um, bring them forward. And Marilyn?
Um, is, is it possible to know who the screening committee is?
Absolutely. Uh, the reason I was waiting was uh, prior to today, that, uh, there was a little bit of a communication breakdown with Mary, uh, being able to communicate with, uh, members that I had put in front of her to make sure that they actually were going to be available and have the time that would be required to fulfill the obligation and the terms, uh, forthwith, uh, set by, um, the Collins Center. And I'm, I'm going to do this from memory. Um, uh, there were different requirements, and one of the requirements were that we're hopeful to have an attorney represent, uh, you know, be part of that screening committee. Next, um, attorney is Mark Beglan, who serves on our, uh, zoning board of appeals. From Mark, I, we wanted someone with a strong financial background. And, uh, Chris Sagnier, um, agreed to step up and, uh, take the second position. Uh, somebody that's involved in planning and well and a longtime resident from the town. Uh, Steve Graham, I think everybody, uh, pretty much knows Steve. He's, he's running the depot, uh, store, and he also has a business over on store, and he also has a business over on Industrial Drive as well. Joan Asslin, I believe, serves on cultural committees in town, has a real estate background, and has agreed, the the last member is, I'm trying to remember now, let me just see if I have these notes here. I mentioned Joan Asslin, and she chairs the Cultural Council. Notes, notes, notes. Okay, I found that particular note, last member is Christine Williams. Christine was actually, I believe, served on the committee when the process involving Mary as our town manager, served on that particular committee, myself and Mary were talking about this, and I guess there's been an awful lot going on lately, because neither one of us could actually remember all the members of that committee, correct, Mary? Okay, so that is the five members of the screening committee, I was asked to participate on the committee, and I don't believe this is the direction the council wanted to take, nor did myself, I'd rather remain on the outsides and and participate like the rest of this council, once the screening committee has done their job, and that will be to have the finalists presented to the entire council, so a little bit of confusion, I am not serving on that committee, but the last member that will be at those meetings, and is not an official member, but will serve an ex officio, which is different from the last screening committee, is Joan, who is with our H. R. Department, so Marilyn, I saw your hand go up?
No, that was, I was gonna, wanted to confirm that Joan was also involved, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome, I think, I think we have an excellent crew going forward, and I, I want to publicly say this, that the last serving committee, the last search committee served us very well, and after conversations with the, our town attorney, and the agency being the Collins Center that we hired, everyone agreed that if we were going to start this process over, we were going to start completely fresh, and that's why the members of this screening committee, this screening committee are all new from our last committee, so I do want to thank everybody that participated in the last screening committee venture, and I know it was time consuming, and we appreciate your efforts, but this is the process moving forward, and like I said, I believe there'll be, the first meeting will either take place today or tomorrow, so that's what I have, I don't know, anyone else has any questions pertaining to that subject matter? And if not, if I can just bring my screen up here quickly, so I don't see any hands, I guess we're pretty well covered, so under new business authorized, authorized the town manager to sign the regional nine-one-one emergency communications, Mary briefly spoke about that in her manager's report this evening, but she can elaborate, or if anyone has any questions prior to her being afforded the opportunity to sign, please bring your comments forward. And Mary, I guess you did a great job of description, so we stand by here, one moment here. I'll entertain a motion to authorize Mary to sign that regional nine-one-one document.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the regional nine-one-one emergency communications amended and restated district agreement.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'm hearing and seeing none at this time. Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, and Don?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, continuing along, under new business, we have our revised traffic and rule rules regulations, and I'll accept the motion to approve the revised documents.
I move to approve the revised traffic rules and regulations as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion regarding those documents? I'm hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that's been adopted. Next order of business, I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an opening, open meeting may have detrimental effects on bargaining or litigating positions of the public body, and then we'll return to open session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we'll all call voting again. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Hey, guys.
Thank you, Don. Okay, back in open session, and before I ask for a motion, I just wanted to remind everyone that was, that either probably participated on the town manager evaluation committee, and the point I'm making is that one of the goals, if we all remember, was, I believe, was for Mary to do everything she could do with outside, without reaching outside her boundaries, to be able to have the East Long Meadow Police Department removed from civil service, so if we ratify the contract this evening when we vote, that that goal would have been met, and I just want to say, and I'm sure everyone else feels the same way, and you'll certainly have the opportunity to weigh in, Mary, thank you so much, I think you did an excellent job, I know what you had in front of you, and it wasn't just this obstacle, it was three obstacles with the other contracts as well, and it certainly would have been a detriment to hand three contracts of this magnitude to a new town manager that's trying to get acclimated, so you're three for three, and I want to thank you, and it's been a pleasure working alongside of you to try to get these contracts ratified, so thank you. If anyone else has any other comments, we can make that, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the terms.
Great job, Mary, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Good job.
Okay.
Everybody, my pleasure.
Thank you, we're, we're working together as a team, and it's, it's going fine. Don?
I make a motion to approve the terms of the new collective bargaining agreement of police, union, local, four eighty-two, as described and discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we've had a tremendous amount of discussion behind closed doors, is there any other discussion on the subject matter? I'm hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Sid?
A yes for public safety.
All right, thank you all, next order of business is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. And I hear a second, if there's no further discussion regarding the adjournment. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, Kathy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Marilyn, and I thank you, and I hope you're feeling better sooner than later.
Thank you.
We can consider ourselves adjourned at eight fifteen, and thank you all for everything you offered this evening to get everything completed, have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.